Good afternoon and thank you for joining us. I'm Marshall Anderson, Vice President of Government Affairs for the Downtown Slam Diego Partnership. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, the Downtown Partnership is the principal voice and driving force behind the economic and cultural prosperity of our urban core. We do this through membership opportunities, advocacy, and public services like Clean &amp; Safe. On behalf of our organization and our sponsors at Kilroy Realty, we want to thank you for taking time and joining us for today's candidate forum. Before we get started, I have the pleasure of introducing Nelson Ackery. Nelson is the San Diego Senior Vice President at Kilroy Realty. Kilroy is our newest neighbor downtown with the groundbreaking of their new office property over at 2100 Ketner. Nelson, I'll invite you to say a few words.
Thank you, Marshall. Hello, everyone. Hope you can hear me. Thank you for logging on and joining us. A special thank you, of course, to our two District Three candidates, Tony and Steve. I know many of you, but my name is Nelson Ackery. I'm the Senior Vice President, Regional Lead for Kilroy Realty here in San Diego. While Kilroy has been active in San Diego for over 70 years, we are a relatively new player in downtown San Diego. So for those of us not familiar with Kilroy, we have over seven decades of experience developing and managing office and mixed-use projects along the West Coast, from Seattle to San Diego. Our projects stand out for attracting the world's leading technology, entertainment, life science, and business services companies. We're particularly proud of being North America's leader in sustainable commercial real estate development. By example, in 2018, Kilroy became the first U.S. REIT to publicly commit to establishing 100% carbon-neutral operations. What that means is by the end of 2020, we'll become the largest REIT in the world to establish complete carbon neutrality. For folks sitting locally, we believe downtown San Diego exemplifies the vibrancy and vitality that Kilroy has drawn to, which is why we are very interested in this conversation today and why we're currently underway, as Marshall mentioned, with our first downtown project in Little Italy and already well into planning our second, larger project in East Village. If you're interested, the partnership can provide links to both projects and you get a better feel for what we're looking to bring downtown. I will close by saying, in this hectic world we find ourselves in, the importance of legislative leadership is invaluable as Kilroy, among hundreds of other organizations, anticipates advancement within the San Diego market. There are important issues facing the world as well as our local government right now, and we look forward to this opportunity to learn about how each candidate plans to address the concerns facing our city. Thank you for allowing me a little time. And before we get to the main event this afternoon, I hope to see all of you in the not-too-distant future. Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Nelson, and thank you to Kilroy for your support and investment in downtown. A couple of quick housekeeping notes on the format of today's forum. We have received the questions that you submitted during registration. We'll try to get to as many of those as possible. If questions do arise during the webinar, please feel free to submit them using the Zoom Q&amp;A function, not the chat, the Q&amp;A function. Each candidate will receive five minutes for their opening remarks. We will then begin the Q&amp;A portion. Each candidate will have one minute to provide their answer. We'll try to get to as many questions as we can before ending with five-minute closing remarks. Let's get it started. Yesterday, we flipped a coin to determine who would start us off this evening. First up is Tony Duran. Since 2013, Tony has served as a representative for Tony Atkins in her Assembly and Senate offices. Her past experience in public service includes working in the mayor's office and as a regional field manager for Equality California. Tony, the floor is yours.
Thanks so much, Marshall. Good to see you all. And thank you all for joining us today. I know it's difficult to be on so many Zooms throughout the day, but I appreciate you joining us today. I do wish I could see all your faces, but I will just pretend that they're all out there smiling. So my name is Tony Duran, and I am running to be your next District Three City Council member for here in our central San Diego. And as Marshall mentioned, in my seven years working in the State Assembly and State Senate under Senate President Pro Tem Tony Atkins, who is also was the first person to endorse my race, which I'm very grateful for. I've been working with local government agencies and organizations. For five years, I was the representative for District Three for our state office. So I would attend community meetings monthly, the community meetings, our town halls, any events that we were having in the district. Anytime a District Three community member needed assistance, I was the first reach. And so the relationships that I've built in working in that office, just with residents and businesses, local organizations, and nonprofits, that helped me make that decision to run for office. It's public service that really feeds my soul, whether it was volunteering my time wherever I could, from growing up to even still through the pandemic. I always wanted to give as much as I could of myself to help others that were less fortunate than I am or that just needed that extra helper, an extra person to talk to. And I think this makes me very uniquely qualified to run and be the new council member in our beautiful district. And besides all of my qualifications that I've already spoke about, I'm also a queer Latina. So the diversity aspect I have with my lived experiences, I believe, is a true reflection of our district and a lot of folks in San Diego, especially a lot of folks that are struggling right now through this pandemic. We do know, like I said, especially now, that diversity, equity, and lived experience are really key factors as well when we're talking about who's going to be the person or the people that represents us and who gets a seat at the table. Too often, I would see faces that weren't like mine in a room, in a meeting, in a community group, in leadership positions, in these decision-making positions. And that has to change. We need to have more diversity throughout in all of our boards and commissions, in our elected offices, in our leadership positions, and really in just everybody that's out there making decisions for us. So working through this pandemic as a public servant, I've learned that if we're really going to address our economy, restarting our economy, addressing climate change, homelessness, our housing crisis, we do need to be flexible, adaptable, and innovative. And we have seen that we can do that. We can make these big decisions and these quick decisions to make positive change in our city that's going to help our residents thrive, help our business owners thrive. And so these are skills that I'm going to bring with me to City Council. And besides that, I always have an open-door policy. I love having others with me helping to make decisions, bringing new perspective. And transparency and communication is such a big issue for me. I think that, well, I don't even think, I know that having more transparency, greater communication with our businesses, with our organizations, with our residents is going to help ensure that people see that we're doing things with them and we're not doing things to you as a government. And I really appreciate the time that we've been given to chat with you, to give you our perspective. And I really just hope that at the end of all of this, it's you that I will have as a partner in City Council. And again, I really appreciate all the work that you all do. I appreciate the great new ideas that you have bringing forth, making sure that we can keep doors open and we can keep businesses going. And I do ask that you vote for me. If you live in the district, vote for me. Donate. Come and volunteer with us. And I know there was supposed to be a countdown timer somewhere. So I'm not exactly sure how much time I have left.
And you can always see the rest of your time. Thank you, Tony. We'll go now to Ms. Harris. Of course, we'll go now to Mr. Stephen Whitburn. As a Regional Director for the American Red Cross, Stephen led a staff of 20 in balanced multimillion-dollar budgets. For more than 20 years, Stephen has served with various nonprofit boards, city committees, and community organizations. Stephen, I'll let you take it away.
Well, thank you very much, Marshall. It is great to be with you. Big thanks to the Downtown Partnership for sponsoring this event. And let me also say thank you to Nelson and Kilroy Realty for your sponsorship of this event as well. I have a personal stake in the success of downtown. I live here. And if all goes as planned over the next few months, I will work downtown as well. And since I've spent so much time downtown, I'm very familiar with its challenges. Among them, of course, homelessness. On the City Council, I will take the lead on homelessness issues, and I will work very closely with you to end San Diego's homelessness crisis. But I'm also very familiar with downtown's beauty. Where else can you take a neighborhood walk and go from San Diego Bay to Balboa Park? Or from Petco Park over to Seaport Village? Downtown is one of San Diego's cleanest neighborhoods, thanks in large part to the Downtown Partnership's Clean &amp; Safe program. And we barely scratched the surface of downtown San Diego's potential for residents, for businesses, and for visitors. Getting there is going to take leadership, and that's what I will bring to the San Diego City Council. I was the Director of the American Cancer Society for Southern California. Earlier, I was at the American Red Cross. After 9/11, I've balanced multimillion-dollar budgets. In the community, I served on the Advocacy Committee for the Greater San Diego Business Association. I served on the North Park Planning Committee by approved plans for housing and for small businesses. I am best prepared to join you in helping to make downtown San Diego everything that we know it can be. I look forward to the opportunity, and I look forward to your questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitburn. We're going to post a Get to Know the Candidates page in the chat for all the attendees to peruse at your leisure. We'll go ahead and dedicate the rest of our time together to Q&amp;A. As I know many of you have questions, please remember to submit any additional questions in the Zoom Q&amp;A feature. The first question is from me. Who is your current favorite player on the San Diego Padres? We'll go first to Mr. Whitburn.
The guy who hits all the home runs, the guy who hits those grand slams. I don't know if I can name names, but when I see the headlines, it looks like the Padres have had a really good winning streak, and I'm excited to see that. And you know, it's really remarkable what the Padres and the ballpark have done for downtown San Diego. I haven't had a chance to, well, I don't know that anybody in the public has had a chance to get down to Petco Park and watch a game this year, but in the past, I have really enjoyed the beauty of Petco Park, even in the years when the Padres weren't that successful. This year, it looks like they recently had a really nice winning streak. They're hitting a streak of grand slams. It's exciting. That kind of energy is something that really brings a lot to downtown, and I look forward to supporting the Padres in the years ahead.
All right, Tony, batter up.
It's always funny when you ask a lesbian about sports, and they don't know much about it. But what I do know about the Padres is that I don't have a favorite individual player because they're a team. I love the teamwork. I love how much they celebrate each other. And all of those grand slams that people are talking about, oh, you're not supposed to do that. You know what? If you have an opportunity to hit a grand slam, you hit that grand slam. Try to get one of those cardboard cutouts. But I love attending games. I miss going. I always loved having different community events out at the park. And yeah, I look forward to the time when we're able to get back together and get out there and have a michelada and hot dog.
Well, shout out to both of you for getting out of that full count. This question comes from Alex. This was echoed by many. What is your plan to help D3 small business owners impacted by COVID-19 to reopen? Tony, we're going to start with you on this one.
Thanks, Marshall. I really appreciate that question because I talk to business owners all the time about how they have been struggling to keep their doors open, especially in a time when, from day to day, from week to week, we never know what kind of business can stay open and what those regulations are going to be. But what I want to do is to, I want to continue letting small businesses that are restaurants, you know, have space out in the open. I want to make sure that we can get more funding through the federal government. We fight for those funds, get as much as we can from the state. You know, we have such a budget shortfall, not just in the city but in the state. But everything that we can do to support, you know, cut red tape, make sure that businesses can stay open because that not only helps the business, but it helps our residents, and it brings good jobs, and it makes sure that other people can make sure that they have food on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Whitburn. We go to you. What is your plan to help D3 businesses impacted by COVID-19 to reopen?
There's a lot that we can do. For one thing, I have been pleased to see the waivers on some of the permits and restrictions that have allowed businesses to operate outdoors. And I hope that we continue to see more efforts to accommodate businesses so that they can be open and working during this environment. Once we do get a handle on the pandemic and we're cleared to open businesses, I'm going to see the city act very quickly to support the businesses who are opening. Of course, direct assistance is one of the most effective ways and one of the things that business owners need right now to get through this crisis. Tourism, I really want to see us boost our energy in attracting tourism, both locally and from out of state, because that will help to boost our local economy. And finally, the ultimate solution is to grow our economy. And we have all sorts of opportunity to attract high-paying jobs to downtown, and I look forward to talking more about that as we go forward.
All right, this question comes from Joseph. Joseph asks, "We've been having a lot of break-ins on State Street. Joseph reached out to the city and the police department. However, the situation doesn't seem to be getting better. How will you help curb crime in downtown?" Mr. Whitburn, we'll go first to you.
Well, I think one of the most fundamentally important parts of a city council office is constituent service. And as I hire my staff, I will ensure that the people who I bring on board are ones who are committed to listening closely to the concerns of our neighborhood residents and our small business owners and working with the mayor's office and our city departments to address the concerns that people have. If there are ongoing break-ins in the same location, then that is a failure of the city's ability to respond, and we have to address that, and I will.
Mr. Ann, over to you. How will you help curb crime downtown?
So part of it is, we want to make sure that when somebody calls to report a crime, that we do have peace officers that can get to the call in a reasonable amount of time, and let's get it stopped. You know, part of that is to make sure that our police officers are focusing on just these things, you know, talking about crime and talking about keeping us safe, taking away, so they're not being called for issues that don't fall under their purview. But with this as well, you know, once we address better our housing crisis and our homelessness crisis, that's also going to help get some folks off the street that feel that the only way they can survive is by committing crimes. So neighborhood watches are also great and making sure that we have that good community connection and we know what's happening and where so we can address it better.
And Mr. Ann, we'll go back to you. I guess an add-on to this would be there's been calls to defund police departments, both here and nationally. From a budget perspective, what is your position?
So this question came up, you know, all of the city council members, all of the, sorry, all the city council candidates were asked this question by the San Diego Union Tribune about would we vote to defund the police and what would that look like? And partially, that's a scary word to hear, "defund." So we don't want to take money away from the police to stop them from doing their job, to stop them from keeping us safe and ensuring that we feel safe and that we are safe and that we're rebuilding community. We have a lot of communities that they feel overpleased, so we need to rebuild that relationship. But it's also looking at, look at all the money that's paid out to the police force in overtime because there's not enough folks to do the jobs that they're being called to do. So we need to relook at that budget, see what it is that the police are doing that should be the job of another city employee or another entity in particular, like mental health. And that's my minute, but I can put my information in the chat box as well.
Thank you. And just a quick reminder from our staff. They're seeing a few questions pop up in the chat. Just remember, please, submit your questions through the Q&amp;A feature. That way, we can get to as many as we can. We received a number of questions concerning homelessness. The question that really speaks to most of them is, "What combination of actions and programs would you employ to reduce homelessness downtown?" Stephen, we'll start with you.
Sure. The City Council late last year approved a community action plan on homelessness. And I think that in concept, it is the right approach. It has prevention with rapid rehousing. It provides short-term shelter for the people who are currently unhoused, and it provides long-term permanent supportive housing. But as we all know, all the plans in the world and a $5 bill will buy you a cup of coffee. What really matters is the funding that we have to accomplish that. I think we need to really hope that the courts find that the convention center expansion proposal that was on the ballot in March did in fact pass with a 50% plus approval because that measure, not only, if it is adopted, will expand the convention center and provide much more resources into downtown. It also has many millions of dollars for the homelessness problem, and I think that that's an important source of funding that we need to pursue.
Tony, your response?
Just real quick, was he going to be able to answer the other question as well? You switched questions on us.
So that's absolutely right. I apologize. Mr. Whitburn, back to you, your position on defunding the police. Thanks. Good catch, Tony.
Yeah, absolutely. Even San Diego police officers don't want to be the first point of contact for our unsheltered population. Even our San Diego police officers don't want to be the first point of contact for people who are experiencing a mental health crisis. Social service providers and others are the ones who are best trained and most effective at getting our unhoused population into shelter, getting them the treatment that they may need, addressing people who are having mental health episodes. I am endorsed by our county supervisor, Nathan Fletcher. He has described me as the partner he needs at City Hall to address these issues, and I look forward to working with him to do that. And I look forward to freeing up the San Diego police to focus on the job that they were hired to do, and that is protecting the public safety and our businesses.
Stephen, we'll stay with you. What combination of actions and programs would you employ to help reduce homelessness downtown?
Did I just answer that, I think?
Both candidates did, but a quick add-on, I guess, what strategies would you employ, and we'll go to both candidates for this, to help transition those homeless individuals who are currently in the convention center into more stable housing?
Yeah, okay, great question. So there is a lot that we can do, and the opportunity for people who are unhoused to be remaining in the convention center is going to be ending before too long. I think that the use of inexpensive motels, purchasing inexpensive motels with state money, is something that we can pursue, and that will provide some rooms. We have one of those in San Ysidro that has recently opened, and the Housing Commission is going to be getting probably a couple of more. So that's one opportunity. I think that if we do have, you know, this bond measure is going to be on the ballot in November. I don't know if it's going to pass in this environment, but if it does, it will open up hundreds of millions of dollars in funding as well to support homelessness services and affordable housing. So at the end of the day, it all takes funding, and I'm going to actively pursue that funding so that we can address it permanently.
Tony, your transition plan for the convention center?
Yes, so we've already been talking about how Project Room Key turned into Project Home Key through the state and how the county has already put in that bid to get millions of dollars in to buy these old hotels and motels and turn them into permanent supportive housing. And we've already been talking about transitioning our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness that have been at the convention center into these new places. And what we need to make sure that we're doing as well is that, making sure that we're not losing sight of the fact that housing first is necessary, but we also need to have permanent supportive services going on so we can address what it is that has kept folks from finding and keeping the housing that they so desperately need, and we need to have that funding.
And the attendees can't see it, but we have a timer on our end and just props to both candidates for staying within your minute. Chris asks, and I'll provide a little context. Yesterday, two organizations released their plans to develop Tailgate Park adjacent to Petco Park. For both candidates, what specifically are you looking for in this space as public input is gathered? And Steve, we're going to go back to you to start this one.
Well, in terms of what I would be looking for is, you know, what can we do that is going to help to boost the economy of downtown? Which of those projects is going to attract people downtown? Which is going to serve as an economic engine? I think some of the people who will have the best input on that are the people with businesses downtown who depend on the kind of revenue that these sort of projects can generate. So I will be very interested in listening to what people who live downtown think about it, what people who work and own businesses downtown think about it, and coming up with a proposal or deciding upon a proposal that is best going to advance the goals that we have downtown.
Tony?
We need to keep open and transparent conversation around these proposals and ideas. It's from our own residents and local business owners that we get the best ideas and the best plans. It's folks that are, this is their everyday life, and they know exactly what they need. And so this is a time especially that we need to be listening to our residents and our business owners. We've had so many changes to our city and our world in the past five and a half months that, you know, we've relied so much on tourism dollars. And now we need to see what other kind of funding and income to build our economy back up. What does that look like now that that tourism is not as strong as it used to be? Until it gets to the time where we do have more folks coming back to San Diego and enjoying our city right along with us.
This question comes from Jordan. Jordan asks, "Could you speak to addressing housing affordability? More specifically, what should the city do to preserve affordable housing opportunities downtown?" And I'm going to add a yes or no question. Do you support rent control? Tony, let's start with you.
So your yes or no question is not quite a yes or no question because there are a lot of folks that feel that rent control would give certain landlords excuses to not upkeep their rental units. But we also need to, we already know that we are in such a housing crisis and our rent is so high for so many folks. We have a great number of people in the city that have not been able to pay their rent since March. And right now, we're looking at what do we do now? Our eviction moratorium is coming up at the end of next month. And what happens next? How do people pay their rent? So we need to make sure that we're building more housing so it can be more affordable. The more housing we have, the lower the housing pricing gets. So let's build, 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 build.
Stephen, what should the city do to preserve affordable housing opportunities downtown? And do you support rent control?
The state of California, as everyone knows, adopted a rent control measure a year or so ago. I do not support adding a rent control or measure a year or so ago. I do not support adding a rent control ordinance above and beyond that in the city of San Diego. We should not do that. As far as affordable housing downtown and across San Diego, I would like to see us incentivize it. You know, so much of what the city of San Diego has historically done around affordable housing has involved mandates. But why don't we incentivize it? One of the things that has happened with city governments in other cities like Seattle is they have said that if the project builds 20% affordable housing, then the housing portion of that project is exempt from property taxes for the next 12 years. And that has been a powerful incentive and there's been an increase in affordable housing in Seattle, Portland, Minneapolis, New York, and other cities that have used incentives. We should do that in San Diego as well.
All right. Onto everyone's favorite topic. Merritt asks, what is your position on short-term vacation rentals? Steven, let's start with you.
Sure. Short-term vacation rentals are, are a important part of many people's financial security. There are a lot of people in District Three who rely on the income from their short-term vacation rentals for their retirement or to boost their other income. And when I went door to door in the primary, I can't tell you how many people said, please don't eliminate short-term rentals. It's very, very important to, to, to my financial security. One of the biggest challenges with short-term rentals is neighborhood disruptions. If you have bad actors who are allowing parties all night. I have a supporter who lives in Normal Heights, whose yard backs up to another yard with a swimming pool and there's people, you know, having parties at three o'clock in the morning and he can't sleep. So we need to crack down on the bad actors. We will do that. But overall, short-term rentals have an important part to play in San Diego's economy.
Tony, on to you.
I do support short-term vacation rentals that are regulated. And that way we can ensure that we're not buying, that there's not a company coming in to buy up our, our affordable housing market to turn into really bigger income for them. So yes, short-term vacation rentals are going to help bring in more, more tourists because it can be more affordable. And it does help a lot of folks that use that extra bedroom or that, that extra couple rooms or when they're, when they're out of town, they'll use their entire home as a way of supplementing their income because it is expensive to live in San Diego. But like I said, I want to also ensure folks to know that we're not going to open up the, the floodgates where anytime you can find an affordable unit that maybe a new family or even a single person or a teacher, nurse, firefighter could afford, that somebody else is going to purchase that up ahead of them.
We did receive a question from Jan. She asked, when will we see the East Village Green Park done? And we, we shared probably the same frustrations. I'll, I'll go ahead and take a stab. I know it was a few months delayed. I believe the current estimated time for completion is November 2022. But I did see Brad Richter here. So if you want to chat over to one of our team members, we can throw that in the chat. Will asks, do you agree with how the county health order is being enforced downtown? Tony, let's go to you for this one.
So the county health order should be done the same all, all around. Not, not just picking and choosing who has to follow rules in, in each neighborhood. You know, we have these health orders out there to, to help keep us safe and healthy because the, the quicker that we can really, you know, they, they say bend the curve, but the quicker we can flatten that curve and be able to, to go back out and support our small businesses, to support our restaurants and to, to open new business. That is, that is what we, that's what we need. That's what's going to grow our, our economy back. So regulation should be the same and enforced the same all across the city. And the, the sooner that we're all following the rules, depending on what the rules may be for the day, I know they change a lot. But the more we follow that and the quicker we do that, the better will, the, the quicker we can get back to, to some, some sort of resemblance of what we've known.
Steven, over to you.
One of the biggest frustrations I hear from small business owners is the lack of certainty in what is occurring around enforcement of these regulations, not just in this environment, but in all sorts of different sorts of regulatory environments. The city of San Diego needs to set the rules, enforce them equally and enforce them the same way every time. And once we have a set of regulations, let's stick with them. The back and forth, the unequal enforcement, the lack of certainty that it leaves small business owners and others with isn't helpful and it's a real drain on the pocketbook.
This question is from Zach. Can you tell us about your campaigns and what it's like to run during the pandemic? Tony, let's go back to you to start this one.
Well, it is, it is difficult. You know, leave it to, to being a first time candidate and the first time you're running and here you are facing a global pandemic. It's, it's hard because I hear people's stories every single day about how this is affecting them, either their, their health or their business, how it's affecting their, their families, how it's affecting their income. And too many people that I've known have, have had the virus and thankfully that they have recovered. But too many people that I know also have, have lost family and friends. And it is, it is really hard to, to be that person that is facing that with them and then turning around and asking them to do something to support you. So we are just focusing on, you know, doing our voter outreach, connecting with folks as much as possible. And I can't wait until we can knock doors again and see people face to face.
The campaign is going well. I was honored to have won the primary election in March and won it by eight and a half points. We've been busy fundraising all summer long and in the mid-year financial reports. I was fortunate to, to raise four times the amount of my opponent. One of the things that we've been doing is having endorsement interviews with various organizations. Every organization that has interviewed the candidates in this race and made an endorsement for the November election has endorsed our campaign. And I'm very honored by that broad show of support. I wish we could be going door to door and talking to voters. But I think we've all become very familiar with Zoom and having these conversations has been productive as well. And we'll continue to communicate with the voters in any way that we can.
What are your thoughts? And this question comes from Nancy. What are your thoughts and would you support a change to how DIF funds, those are developer impact fee funds are allocated? Steven, we can start with you on this one. What are your thoughts on how DIF funds are allocated and would you propose any changes?
Well, one of the conversations has been distributing those funds to provide more equity into different neighbors in San Diego, and I support that. One of the things that we see is the communities in the northern part of the city that have more robust development are developing funds with more money than they can spend for the, the, the uses of the DIF funds. Whereas in some of the other areas south of eight, where there isn't as much development going on, they are starved for funds. And that is where they really need some infrastructure support. There was a story in the paper a couple of days ago about dirt roads in, in one of the neighborhoods in San Diego. So let's get the city's roads paved and let's try to restore some equity to the distribution of infrastructure in the city.
Tony?
I think especially now during this pandemic, when we see how, how hard it's hurting so many folks in so many different ways, that these funds should be allocated in the way that best serves each community. And if it means that we're, that we're sharing some of those funds across the board, then let's do that because even though I'm running to be the District Three representative, this is not just about me. This is not just about my, my third district. This is about all of San Diego and making sure that each neighborhood has equitable access to, to funding, to infrastructure. You know, I, when I was knocking doors during the, the No On Eight campaign and even after that, I was in areas of San Diego, this was in 2008, that didn't have sidewalks. There was, there was nothing paved. And the fact that it's 2020 and that's still the same, we need to make a change. We need to be taking care of our cities better.
This question is from Daniel. What are your thoughts on how we can enhance transportation mode share? Both to help achieve our goals in the climate action plan and to make the city and our urban core more accessible to everyone? Tony, we'll start with you.
So I was really, I was really saddened when the MTS plan that was going to be on the, on the ballot in November had to be delayed until 2022 because I think that that was, that was something that was going to really address a lot of these issues. We need to expand our, our transportation. People want cleaner, greener, more affordable, better accessible options to, to driving a car. And these are things that we need to do, not only to, you know, get out of our congested roadways and highways, but to address the climate change that we're facing. I mean, how hot has it been over the past couple of weeks? You know, thankfully it's cooled down a little bit, but these are, this is green energy. This is changing greenhouse gas emissions. Having more electric cars and electric buses. And so we need to, it really increase the, the amount of other transportation first and last mile as well.
Before we go to Steven, what are your thoughts on micro mobility options? And as you know, the partnership helped start Free Ride Everywhere Downtown, also known as Fred's. What are your thoughts on micro mobility? And have you ever ridden a Fred?
I love Fred, which, or Circuit, whatever you want to call it, but Free Ride Everywhere Downtown is, is the, the best, is the best way to talk about it. I use it all the time. Well, when I was, when I was downtown, working all the time, I would use it all the time to get it around. I love that it was electric. I love that it was simple app-based. It was free for, for anyone to ride. And it's, it's just a cleaner connection and that's something that we can use in, in all of our neighborhoods. You know, when we, when we're talking about removing parking in different neighborhoods and you know, how are you going to get to the businesses that you need to get to? This is, this is one of those options we can look at, you know, have these little electric vehicles hopping around, connecting different neighborhoods. It's, it's free for us. It's an investment, a great investment for the city. And it's fun, you know, it's, it's, it's a great community connection. I really appreciate it.
And Steven, we'll, we'll give you some extra time on this. So what are your thoughts on how we can enhance transportation mode? To both achieve our goals in climate action plan and to encourage better transportation downtown? And then what are your thoughts on micro mobility options like Fred? Have you ever ridden one?
Sure. So lots there. In terms of transit, you know, downtown is our region's transit hub. It should remain that way. Having downtown be the transit hub, hub brings lots of people and lots of money into the downtown economy. Sandag is out with a very ambitious 30-year regional transportation plan. It's got a big price tag, but providing that a good chunk of that funding comes from the state and federal governments. I think that the construction that would be involved in that would be a real boost to the economy and it would help our transit system. I like the idea of the light rail going around Balboa Park. I think that would be good for the park and good for downtown as well. In terms of the climate action plan, the city needs to look at its environmental action plan in a five-year time horizon. That's the only way the city is going to adequately fund it on a year-to-year basis. I live downtown. I'm a walker. I can get anywhere downtown in 20 minutes. I haven't used Fred, but I see lots of people using it. And I think it's a terrific service. In terms of micro mobility, I think scooters are another useful tool. We just need to keep them off the sidewalks.
And that leads into another question we got. How do you keep them, scooters and shared bikes? How do you keep them off the sidewalk or what's your plan for that? Steven, maybe we can stay with you on this one.
Sure. I mean, I, I think that number one, the city of San Diego was a little slow on the roll in terms of rolling out the public information about the expectations in using those things. And you had a lot of people coming in who saw the scooters and thought that it was acceptable to ride on the sidewalks. The city had an obligation to inform people that that was not acceptable and it didn't do that. Another thing that we need to do is improve our bike lanes downtown. We've seen some progress on that. I'm encouraged by that. But when we have bike lanes that people feel comfortable with, then more scooters will naturally be in there. I do think we need to enforce the rules against having scooters on the sidewalks. But all in all, I think that we have seen a market decrease in scooters on the sidewalks and we just need to make sure that stays the case.
Tony?
So when I was in, in Minneapolis, Minnesota for, for some training with a local organization where I was one of their fellows, they actually had really great educational materials that they would put up on, on poles throughout the city. And you did not see any scooters on sidewalks because the city did a really great job of education and, and making sure that folks were informed. This is what you do with the scooter. This is where you ride it. This is where you place it. So, you know, the fact that we have, we definitely have issues with, you know, getting plans in place on, on what kind of these other, other rideshare devices we could have. You know, that, that's definitely a big issue with the city where we tend to be not so forward-thinking and that. But really education and outreach is the biggest thing and partnering with these, with these businesses that are putting them out there and making sure that they're informing folks also is a, is a thing to do.
And we did receive a response from Brad Richter of the city's urban division, also an Alonso Award winner from the downtown partnership. Brad says the East Village Green is anticipated to go out to bid early fall of this year. Hopefully we'll start construction soon after New Year's. Civic San Diego is working to finish up the permitting at the city. It will be a two-year construction period. Thank you, Brad, and thanks for all you do to make downtown a better place. We received a lot of questions, both here live and in registration about noise, from car noise to house parties to concerts in downtown. What are your thoughts about the current noise ordinance and would you propose any changes? Tony, let's stick with you on this one.
Okay. I think as, as with anything, ordinances need to be reviewed on a, on a regular basis. We need to be having great, greater conversation with our businesses and our residents to, to learn more about their personal experiences. And then work with, you know, work with places like Petco Park and make sure that they're aware of what the issues are because we know they want to be a, a good neighbor. Everybody wants to be a good neighbor. And so it's communication and transparency are, are the, the biggest aspects. Those are, are key to, to me and to my campaign in itself. And, you know, like I said, it's bringing more people to the table to have these conversations to, to ensure that we're not have, you know, just following outdated rules, but that we're working with them to get them all updated to work with us and for us.
Steven, your thoughts on the noise ordinance and would you propose any changes?
Sure. You know, I'm not sure that the noise ordinance itself is the issue. I think it's the responsiveness to the complaints is where we really have the problem. If, you know, there's a loud party or if you've got a, a car without a muffler that's going in and out all the time and you reach out to the police to get something done about it, good luck. The police would love to be able to address that. That's what they're there to do. But what they're doing right now is responding to issues around people who are unsheltered. I went on a police ride-along back maybe six months ago. And I would say that out of the eight calls that we went on, about five of them, more than half, had to do with people who were unsheltered, fights and overdoses and things like that. Let's allow our police department to address the regulations that they're there to do, including noise complaints and loud parties and everything else. And that will address so much of the problem.
With the onset of COVID-19, we've had to really reimagine everything we do from outdoor dining to how we zone certain parcels. Craig asks, what are your feelings about the employment overlay zone in downtown? Steven, we'll start with you.
The employment overlay zone, you may have to educate me on this one. I, I'm, do I, tell me, but what is the employment overlay zone? Maybe I'm familiar with, but I don't know it by that name.
And this is an overlay that would And this is an overlay that would require a certain amount of employment opportunities or commercial spaces to allow any development on that parcel. So the thought is here, or some might, may say that, well, we're not filling up certain office buildings, so maybe we should remove that employment overlay zone in order to build more residential. That's just one example.
I see. Well, you know, this is going to have to be a conversation that I have with the people who have a stake on this issue. This is not a question that has come up during the campaign. It's not a, an issue that I frankly know too much about. And I'm not going to sit here and spew a bunch of nonsense about something that I'm not familiar with. What I look forward to doing is listening to you, what your thoughts are on this issue and trying to find a solution that works for everybody moving forward in downtown. What's best for residents and what's best for businesses?
Tony, your thoughts on the downtown overlay zone?
Well, I'm going to have to call Mr. Craig Benedetto and have a conversation with him so he can educate me better. And, and that, that's the whole part of, of, you know, being in a campaign and, and even being an elected official, is having people that you can work with that can educate you on things that you don't know about. Because any candidate or, or any elected official that's going to tell you that they know all the answers to everything is not somebody that, that you should be listening to. Because, you know, there are plenty of things that, that we don't know about. But I got to tell you, I, when we're, when we're building, I want to make sure that we're building more mixed-use development, more businesses on the bottom and, and residents on the top. That's going to help grow our economy. It's going to help address our housing crisis. And like I said, Craig, I'll be calling you.
Well, just make sure you call us, not Craig. Well, here's a, here's another question for you from Christopher. What's your favorite downtown brewery? Stephen, we're going to go back to you on this one. Your favorite downtown brewery?
It's the brewery that's down by, by Petco Park. Its name escapes me, but it's a combination brewery and, and restaurant. And it's a delightful open airspace to be in, a great place to be during the environment that we're in right now.
I love that you, you stuck to your guns, even if you didn't remember the name. Tony, on to you, your favorite downtown brewery?
I mean, Stone's always fun because you can, you can hop into Stone Brewery right there and then hop over and, you know, watch, watch the game. There are so many that are, that are walkable. It, it's getting to the point where we have so many local breweries and it, it, there, there's too many to choose from, depending on where you are in, in the city or where you are downtown. But I got to tell you, I, I kind of love them all. Coming from, coming from St. Louis, Missouri, where all you were allowed to drink was Bud Light or Budweiser. Being in San Diego, that was, it's, it's one of my favorite things because we have so many options. But yeah, I, I love popping into Stone there.
This question is from Steve. I know we spoke to rent control conceptually, but let's speak to one specific, and that's Prop 21. What is your position on Prop 21? Do you support or do you oppose? Tony, we'll start with you.
I'm going to need you to remind me which one that is. Sorry.
Statewide Rent Control Initiative. This would basically allow for local municipalities to impose rent control locally.
Right. Just like I said before, rent control is such a, a, there's so many different layers to it. We don't want the rent to be so high that, that people that live here can't afford to be here any longer. We don't want rent to be so high that, that our kids and our nieces and nephews can't stay here once they're, once they're grown up. We don't want it so high that we're going to see more, more homelessness. But we also need to ensure that we're not going to have folks saying, "Well, because you're not paying much rent, that means I don't have enough income to, to fix your apartment or to fix, fix the stairs or fix whatever, whatever it is." So for me, there's a lot, there's greater conversation that, that needs to happen there because our rent is way too high. But I don't know if this is the, the solution.
And Stephen, do you have a position on Prop 21?
Sure. I generally support local control on a wide variety of things. I, I don't like it when the state or federal governments make decisions that I believe ought to be left to local governments with people who know their communities and can make their own decisions for what is right. As it respects to San Diego, if it were to pass, I would not support increasing the, the rent control in San Diego. I think we ought to stick with what the state has already done and, and see if that's sufficient.
Tony, we're going to go back to you. Tim asks, are you in favor of Penny for the Arts? This is what takes TOT funding and diverts it to cultural funding, helps provide funding for arts in San Diego.
Yes, I absolutely support Penny for the Arts. It, it's really frustrating that, you know, this, this, this plan and this partnership was, was made, like promises were made and then broken. Because arts, arts and culture, it's not just about, you know, a, a nice painting that hangs in a, in a museum or, or in a mansion in La Jolla. We're talking about our black and brown and immigrant communities. We're talking about stories of, of the culture of so many different peoples. We're talking about veterans who use art to address their, their PTS. We're talking about young kids that have, that have come, that had been incarcerated and they come out and they are introduced to new ways of, you know, focusing their, their thoughts and energies and, and investment made into them. So absolutely, Penny for the Arts is something that we should grow, we should honor and get that funding.
Stephen, over to you.
Sure. Penny for the Arts really benefits downtown San Diego and District Three all in all. It's an economic engine. The arts and culture, the events, the institutions, the money that is invested by the city in those arts and culture activities produces a tremendous return on the investment in the term, i- in, in terms of people who partake in those activities, who spend money, who stay in hotels, who patronize restaurants and other small businesses. That is true anywhere it occurs, but given the fact that so much of that activity is downtown and in Balboa Park, those have a particularly high return downtown and in District Three. And the Penny for the Arts is funded by the transient occupancy tax. That's the hotel tax. It's paid for by out-of-town visitors for the most part. So let's use visitors' money to boost our economy. I'll support that any day.
Great. And this question comes from Rana, back to homelessness. Could you describe what you might do similarly or differently than your predecessor, the current council member regarding homelessness? Tony, we're going to start with you on this one.
For one, I, I believe we need more voices at the table that, that have experienced homelessness. We need more people at the table, like, like your folks that, that do homeless outreach downtown and the Clean and Safe Team. These are, these are folks that, that know homeless, are, are experiencing homelessness. They know what they needed, what got them there. And lived experience is, is so important when we're, when we're talking about decision-making. So that is, that is a, a big focus for me. And, you know, just the continued communication and transparency with, with our neighborhoods. Because there are a lot of folks that, unfortunately, folks that, that are experiencing homelessness, people fear them. And we need to remember that, that these are people. This, these are their, their lives that we're talking about, getting them the help that they need.
And Stephen, what would you do similarly or differently than your predecessor with regards to homelessness?
Sure. The incumbent council member for District Three, Council Member Chris Ward, has been a leader on homelessness. He has been the chair of the Regional Task Force on the homelessness. He was one of the loudest voices calling for a comprehensive plan to address homelessness, which ultimately resulted in the plan that was adopted, the framework adopted by the city council last fall. So that is one of the things that I will do on the San Diego City Council, is I will be the leader on homelessness issues on the city council because the issue is most pronounced right here downtown and around District Three. Of course, so much of what actually happens in the city depends on the mayor's office and the strong mayor form of government. So we're going to have to have a council member who will be very, a, a strong advocate for homelessness programs at the mayor's office. But I suspect that that's going to be the case anyway.
We're going to wrap with a couple more questions. This one comes from Craig Benedetto. As a follow-up, what are your thoughts and priorities for any downtown community plan update? Stephen, we will start with you. Thoughts and priorities for any new downtown community plan update?
Sure. Well, I definitely want to see more housing and I want to see more high-tech office space. So the degree that we can have a community plan that facilitates both of those things, I think that's important. We need to add density. We need to add density and downtown is the right place to do it. We can build up downtown and by adding additional housing downtown, we provide not only the housing for the people who need it, but customers for the many businesses that depend on the residents. When I talk to real estate professionals, there's been a considerable amount of interest lately in office space for high-tech businesses. I'm really pleased to see Horton Plaza will become a high-tech hub. I think we need to attract more of those tech jobs and other high-paying jobs to downtown. And that will also spur the economy for downtown. And I think that our community plan has a lot to do with creating the environment to make those things happen.
Tony, over to you. Your thoughts, any priorities on the next CPU?
Yeah, just like I, I said earlier, we, you know, we need to be reviewing things just like this on, on a regular basis. Because what was written five, 10, 15 years ago, sometimes on some of these, on some of these plans, it's, we're in a different environment now. We need to be looking at more mixed-use spaces, talking about having, you know, having business and residential in, in this, in the same areas. Downtown is such a hub. It's, it's walkable everywhere. We're going to have more transit coming, coming through. Because that is, that is our plan to address climate change as well. And, you know, these are, these are so important. These are things that are going to help continue to grow our economy, be that world-class city that we talk about and that, and that world-class destination. And we need to be leading the way and not coming up with ideas after the fact.
And our last question comes from Valerie. How can we get the mentally ill and those struggling with addiction off of our streets and into more supportive care? Tony, we're going to start with you and Mr. Whipper, and we will end with you.
This is exactly one of the things that, that I had mentioned earlier when we're talking about looking at, at our, at our police budget. It's, it's not our police force that should be the, the first responders when we do individually or when people in the neighborhood, in our neighborhoods are facing somebody that, that is having drug issues or, or mental health issues. We need people out there that have the experience and the training to, to work with them directly, work with them one-on-one and get them safely to the, to the facilities that they need to, to get attention. You know, we have the, the County of San Diego building a behavioral health facility in Hillcrest, right around the hospitals. And, you know, we need a, a space just like that where people's issues can be addressed. People can get the help that they need and that will help get them off the streets and a, address issues that, that they're facing every day.
Stephen, your plan on those dealing with drug abuse or mental health issues?
Sure. There, there's a couple of different approaches. One, of course, is we need a strong partner in the County of San Diego. The county is responsible for health and human services as well as mental health. And the County of San Diego historically has not stepped up to the plate on its responsibilities with the city of San Diego in those regards. Nathan Fletcher has taken a lead role since his election in addressing some of those issues. He's endorsed me. We look forward to working together specifically to address some of these issues in the city that ought to be handled by the county. But the other areas with permanent supportive housing, we need to have the facilities that are built so that those who are currently on the streets could be housed and have the wraparound services that actually provide the, the support that they need to become active members of the society once again. And those are both priorities that I'll pursue.
Excellent. I'm now going to invite both of you to offer five-minute closing remarks. Anything you want to end with? Anything you wish you had answered differently? If you want to say Fernando Tatis Jr. is your favorite padre. Mr. Whipper, and we'll start with you. You have five minutes, sir.
Well, Marshall, thank you very much for being such an adept moderator of this forum. Really appreciate that. Thanks to the entire Downtown Partnership for bridging this opportunity. And thanks to each of you for participating in this. Looking at the Participants tab, there has been quite an attendance turnout for this forum and it shows the interest that we have in downtown and the gravity of the issues that are, are before us here. I look forward to working with you as we rebuild our economy, as we solve the homelessness crisis, as we restore tourism, as we build more housing, as we attract more high-paying jobs downtown. We're at a critical moment in our city's history and we need an experienced, proven leader representing downtown at City Hall. Someone who has run organizations, someone who has managed a staff, someone who has balanced a multimillion-dollar budget, someone who will step into this job and be effective from day one and someone who will work with you to achieve our goals. Together, let's create a prosperous post-pandemic San Diego and I look forward to working together to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And now to closing remarks from Tony Duran. Tony, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you to the Downtown Partnership. Thank you to Kilroy for, for partnering with them as well. Partnerships are, are so important, not just in, in business, in relationships, in government, in, in all that we do. And diversity, communication, transparency, and also doing the work. You know, there, there is no turn when it comes to serving. There is no, it's my turn, it's your turn, step out of the way or anything like that. I encourage everyone that wants to serve their community to do so. Run for office, run for your community planning group board. Run for your HOA. Do whatever it is that you can to continue to engage with your community. We have seen that through this pandemic, it is, it is hard on folks financially. It's hard on folks mentally. But it's, it's also shown us that when folks have other ways to connect with their, with their community, with their, with their elected officials, with City Hall, when there are other options available for them that haven't been available before, people get engaged. They want to be engaged. And so I want to continue this. You know, Zooms can be, can be difficult when you're on a, on a Zoom, looking at a, at a camera all day and not having people around you. But it, it allows us to, to connect. It allows us to, to make it from, from normal heights to, to downtown, to Santa Cidro, all within moments of each other, to be a part of greater conversation. Where we're talking about housing, where we're talking about the need to build housing that's, that's affordable for lower-income folks, for, for our senior citizens who are on fixed incomes, for college students, for our teachers and our firefighters, for all public servants, for our brand-new families just, you know, buying their, trying to buy their first home or, or getting into their, their first home. We are at a time where it's all of us coming together and working together that is going to build our city. that is going to build our city back up. It is going to grow our economy. It is going to make us stronger. We're going to have a lot of growing pains. You know, having increasing the the types of transit that we need, adding more bike lanes so people feel safe riding a bike because they want to have that option because they want to help combat climate change, and that's one of the ways they can do it. These are all things that that we need to be doing, and we need to make it easier for folks to be able to access these other options. This isn't an us versus them. This isn't a all or nothing, and this isn't a one size fits all. It's going to take all of us working together. And I appreciate everyone that's been on this on this meeting tonight. I appreciate all your questions and all your comments. I appreciate that you bring things to the table that that we weren't thinking about. And that is what makes us stronger, not only as individuals and as candidates and as electeds, but it makes us stronger as as business owners. It makes us stronger as public servants and outreach workers. So like I said, we have, there's a lot of growing pains. There's a lot that we're gonna miss out on for a little while. There's a lot of change and a lot of growth. But we're going to do it. We're going to do it together. And I just really appreciate you all again. Marshall, thank you all. I appreciate what you continue, what you all continue to do downtown. You know, I was, we had volunteers out there with you all after the the first protests that were downtown and we were helping to clean up. These are things that you all do just because you love your city and you know it needs to be done. So we're going to keep doing this. We're going to keep doing it together. And thank you. And don't forget to vote for Tony Duran.
And thank you to our two candidates and to all of you at home for joining us this evening. As a reminder, Election Day is coming up, Tuesday, November third. Per the governor's executive order, all voters will receive a mail in ballot. You can also track your ballot by signing up for where's my ballot at sdvote.com. There will be polling places open for four days, October thirty first through November third. But be prepared as there will be fewer polling locations and longer lines. If you or your organizations are interested in additional opportunities to get involved here in downtown, whether it's issues or advocacy, we encourage you to visit our website to learn more about membership with the downtown San Diego partnership and our efforts to advance an economically prosperous and culturally vibrant downtown. We will be making a recording of this webinar available tomorrow in our follow up email to participants. Thank you for joining us today. Please stay safe, stay strong. We look forward to seeing you again soon.